President.
Charles Jennings.
Here.
Mike Munson.
Here.
Andrew Patton.
Here.
Scott Rogers.
Here.
Brian Wells.
Here.
Rick Rush here.
Uh, this time, if anybody has any conflict of interests or any of the issues with what we're discussing, please say so now, otherwise I'll go to the consent agenda from the meeting minutes, June twenty eighth, two thousand and sixteen. Uh, we did get an email regarding a lot of this already, so. We want to mo- did you guys get the minutes? Everyone should have gotten, I think I did.
And I got the draft and what all is talked about.
Do you need a motion to accept the minutes?
Yeah.
So, minute.
Second, any?
Yeah.
Gordon seconds, all those in favor of approving the minutes from June twenty eighth meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed likewise? This time, we'll consider old business, it is not a public hearing, so we're going to consider amendments to zoning regulation, Article twenty five, Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, zoning administrator and administrative variances, and the combination of the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, and I'll turn it over to the city.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can we, just for housekeeping matters, I'm picking up just a little bit of, uh, of, uh, lack of clarity. Mr. Rush, who has been on Planning Commission, is here on tonight, and is, seems to be unclear whether he is a member or is no longer a member of the Planning Commission. Can you guys clarify his status?
Um, as far as I know, uh, his term expired, I think, two months, a month or two ago, and I was in the impression that Josh had communicated with him about that, and he was, correct if I'm wrong, but indifferent as to whether or not he'd be reappointed, so the decision, as I understand it, was not to reappoint because of this issue that was coming up, so that's all I know about it. Um, he was not reappointed to that seat.
I have, I have no, I've not talked to Josh about it, I just assumed that Rick had been communicated with, I had not asked Josh, I assume somebody from the city had talked to Rick about that, so.
It's not my board. I can look into it.
No problem.
Do you want to do that one?
There's others.
No. Sorry.
I apologize for that, I assumed that that, he was aware of that, but. Okay, business at hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright, thank you, alright, go ahead, old business?
Yes, okay, I'm gonna do this a little bit out of order. Um, in your packet, you should have the final, hopefully, changes proposed to Article twenty five, uh, governing these two boards and the variance process. Um, I'm just gonna skip ahead to page twenty five, three. Basically, everything from this point on is just that kind of grammatical cleanup we talked about, so I'm just trying to dispense quickly with it. Pretty much, all of it's just capitalizing the Bs in board to clarify that it's referring to the Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, 'cause it used to be a generic reference to the Planning Commission. Um, there was that one piece of language in twenty five, four, subpoint E, uh, which I believe Josh addressed at the last meeting. Uh, we struck out the part about taking the variance to the registered deeds, 'cause that's not practice in place, so that's not even being done, uh, but that was already approved under the prior motion. And then, the only other things I can think of here, we struck out one reference to zoning appeals, just trying to make it all unanimous. On first reference in each section, Board of Zoning Appeals, every reference thereafter, just board, but it's all the same entity. And then at the very end, um, twenty five, eleven, again, some capitalization things, just trying to clean it up, make all the references match. Sorry, am I moving too quickly?
Yep.
Uh, so zoning subdivision regulations, just capitalizing those references. I don't believe that there are any other changes in these sections, so I just wanted to get, get through those and get to the meat of it.
I had, I had a couple of questions there on that, that you guys can answer, but I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that, or where, where it is. We, we struck in the, in the first part, twenty five, one oh one, or, or, uh, part B, the reference to what a quorum is?
Yes.
Is that, and you said that spelled out somewhere else?
Yeah, I was just gonna go through these
Okay.
point by point, so you guys are very clear on all the changes. The majority of these changes that you are probably not familiar with are because most of this language was in municipal code under, um, part two, chapter two, article three, division six. The Planning Commission's bylaws were in code. But when we created the new zoning regulations, we pulled the Board of Zoning Appeals over to that, and we took all of that language out of code, but not on the Planning Commission's side. So one of the things we wanted to do here is clean this up, so we don't have two competing sets of regulations, because there's stuff in the old Planning Commission ordinance that's not, does not match what's in our zoning regulations. So, uh, our city attorney definitely wanted to take care of all the, the duplicative language. So the decision was made, rather than amend it all in a municipal code, when we knew we were still gonna have to have references to the Planning Commission here because of the proposal before you, let's put it all in this section, both Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, and get it all out of municipal code. That also means, and has a side effect of, if ever in the future we want to change something about this board again, you will have the ability to have a public hearing regarding the composition of your own board. Previously, that may not have been the case, so to be honest, a lot of this was probably an oversight. This stuff should have been struck out at least two years ago, and we're just now catching up to it. So the new language already existed, it was just in a section of code that you guys weren't dealing with. And so we've tried to move it over, there's been some rearrangements, some cleanup, and what, uh, Mike, to answer your question in short, uh, most of these provisions are also duplicative, because we have a general, uh, provision for all boards, and we're working on cleaning that up too, but it specifies things like terms, replacement, quorums, and those sorts of things. So, it's redundant to have it also in the regulations, we wanted to keep that stuff still over in municipal code. Uh, but I will go through point by point, and if you have any questions, just holler at me. So in twenty five, one oh one, A, we moved the language down to the next subpoint, that's all we did. And this is to try to mirror our other board ordinances. They start off by saying what the membership amount is, and then the next section gets into any specialty provisions, so many members must be such or such, and so it's a little bit just a rearrangement, so it looks like it's struck through, but it, you'll find it there in B, it specifies the members outside the city limits. Uh, we did add the staggered terms of three years, that's, we're trying to stagger terms on all boards. Eventually, that might end up in the general provisions, and we may end up taking that out down the line, but for now, it's not there, so we wanted to have that here. And, uh, the vacancy to be appointed to the unexpired term, which that hasn't been done properly in the past, and it's one reason we don't have the term staggered properly, so we, we wanted to state that clearly. Uh, subpoint B, like I said, this was just moved out of A, this is talking about the specialty membership of the two members who live outside the city limits. Um, as far as the removal provisions, um, currently under city code in division one of that section I mentioned earlier, uh, the commission can remove any member for absenteeism, either three consecutive meetings or six regular meetings within a one-year period. And, as far as, we didn't, the malfeasance, I mean, you could probably leave that in if you really felt strongly about, but basically, the commission has the ability to remove any board member at any time for any reason, with or without cause. Uh, all members of these boards, et cetera, serve at the pleasure of the Board of City Commissioners, may be removed with or without cause upon a vote of at least four members of the Board of City Commissioners. So, that covers malfeasance and a whole host of other problems that could arise, and rather than get specific, uh, we want to just keep it general, so that's why we decided to take that out. But like I said, if, especially with the Board of Zoning Appeals aspect to it, if we need to look at that, certainly, we can. And then as far as, um, let's see, subpoint C, a little language cleanup here, again, just trying to mirror other ordinances for other boards, but nothing was really changed in function, other than we moved the, the meeting requirement down to the next subpoint again. And, and we clarified that we can not have a meeting if there's no business, which reflects current practice. At the quorum, we're actually taking those references out entirely. According to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, a quorum is a majority of your board, or half your board plus one, and you cannot change that, which is something we just recently became aware of. Regardless, even if you have vacancies on your board, your quorum still remains the percentage of the total defined membership. So your quorum's always gonna be five members, no matter what. Um, for purposes of the Board of Zoning Appeals, I guess it would be four. But you would have five anyway, most likely, because you'd have to convene as the Planning Commission, yes?
Uh, just question, question for clarification. Uh, in the last meeting, it kinda stood out in my mind, 'cause we hadn't, I think we met in February, and then again, in last month, I remember the city manager in his address emphasizing the gravity of this board and that, he, he said it, by state statute, it must meet regularly. And so now, I think what you said is, meet as needed, as opposed to just.
Well, it says to meet once per month unless there is no business. We anticipate it will be meeting more regularly. If you look at the calendar of the meetings from two thousand and fifteen, pretty much every month that the Planning Commission did not meet, the Board of Zoning Appeals did, so if we'd already done this a year ago, you would have met almost every month last year, so. Uh, but, you know, since February until last month, neither board has met, so there
Right.
there may be some dry spells, but I think the hope is that this board will meet pretty much every month, and.
So, so is that a stat- state statutory regu- or is it just the best practice? I'm just trying to clarify.
Probably best practice, I mean, there's no statutory requirement about frequency of meetings, that's set by
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
No, that's.
I thought that was the language that Mr. Hernandez used in addressing the
Um.
matter of the Planning Commission.
Well, it may, I don't, I would, I would be honest, I would have to double check it out.
I'd say probably has to, if there's business that
It has to state that you meet monthly.
doesn't have to wait for months for us to meet, is probably what it's saying, is why it gives us the out. If there's no business, then we can not meet, but if anybody, if a citizen has something, they should have to wait three months for us to decide to have a meeting. Would be my, my intention of.
That's correct, you're right, there is a statutory provision specific to Planning Commissions, I believe, that they meet regularly, or once a month. Uh, we're just trying to make the language match what we've been doing in practice, which is if there's nothing to discuss, why have a meeting?
And I guess I'll ask that from the standpoint of, uh, one of the other roles was to periodically review and, uh, revise as needed, uh, our codes and our planning even, so, so I think even when we don't have a agenda, I think it's probably prudent to at least maybe do a review of a section.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I mean, if you wanna give.
Uh, anyway, but
If you wanna give staff the direction.
The issue is not whether, whether or not I think we need to, I was trying to clarify, 'cause my understanding was the city manager's comment was that there was a statutory compulsion that this board meet regularly.
Yeah, I seen her call that now.
Like I said, only sends out my mind, 'cause he said that, and I pointed out to, to Gordon, who told me not to call him Mr. Fry, but I can't call him Commissioner Fry. Uh, I pointed out to him, I said, the minutes reflect that, we met in February and now in June, so, so we don't, he's saying we're supposed to meet monthly and regularly, and we've met twice so far this year. So anyway, but that's what I was just trying to clear.
Yeah, I think it's been an unusually slow period.
Is there some obligation that we're missing?
We'll take care of business, that's all that matters.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I think Josh has enough work for you guys if you're willing to take it on.
Yeah, well, I'm just, just wanna know what, what the, what the judicial law, that's okay.
As this is read and staged, you will meet once per month unless there's no reason to do so, so.
Okay.
Um, are there any other questions on twenty five, one regarding the changes to the Planning Commission? Like I said, most of this already existed, it was just in a different location, we're pulling it in and keeping it all in one document. And I do want to add, as of January, we hope to have all this codified in our municipal code, so it's gonna be searchable and easily referenced, both the zoning and the subdivision regulations. We want to get those, um, put into code as supplemental documents, but we have to wait till the new year, 'cause the budgetary cost is somewhat significant. So, you'll be able to look this stuff up a lot more easily if we get that accomplished. Okay, if there are no further questions on the Planning Commission, uh, section twenty five, two, the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is the only remaining section to discuss. Literally, everything that existed before was struck out. And I think much of this was presented last month, there may be some things that are different, so let me go through this real quick. Again, on subpoint A, we're designating the board as being the Planning Commission with the variations in subpoint B. The, and we did clarify this, it was agreed between staff and city attorney that the best practice would be to exclude the two members who live outside the city limits, um, as long as we do not have extraterritorial zoning. Um, it just seemed to be the best way to meet it. Again, state statute is vague, it could go either way, you can read a part of it that says seven members flat, and the other part says the whole Planning Commission, and it, where you weigh in on that is kinda just what we think is best, and we, we felt like that was the best fit, and she agreed with that. So that's the language that was drafted, uh, to represent that. Now, in the case of if you convene last today as the Planning Commission and then need to go into Board of Zoning Appeals business, we phrased it, uh, that they would recuse themselves, the envisioning you'd step down, basically, during the entirety of the Board of Zoning Appeals, once that's ended, there'd be a motion to close off that part, and you could come back if there was business. We would try to structure it in such a way that you, you could just leave, hopefully, uh, because most of the stuff the board's gonna deal with isn't gonna come back to Planning Commission immediately.
It's the board of zoning, you're the first.
Those hearings could take a while too, so. But, you know, if for some reason you had to come back, that, that's how that would get governed. And I believe, Mike, you'd asked about the quorum language here as well.
Yeah, you cleared that up.
Yeah, it doesn't define the quorum, but it's basically just saying, if you have one, this is how you must conduct your business. Everything has to be a motion and a majority vote, there's no, because the Board of Zoning Appeals is a quasi-judicial board, so everything's gotta be very rigorously documented in case it does ever get appealed in district court, so that's really all that's getting at. And then, subpoint C, um, this is kinda what I suggested doing. This basically allows each board to have its own independent leadership, so, for instance, if Mike was voted the chair of the Planning Commission, that would be allowed now, because the Board of Zoning Appeals would have its own officers, but they'd have to select their own chair, since he'd be unable to serve in that capacity. So that actually, I think, helps to keep these two boards independent. It'll probably be a little more effort on staff's part if you do have separate chairs, 'cause that's two people to communicate with for special meetings as opposed to one, but I think it's the best way all around that they each have their own independent mission, and to be honest, personally, I'd almost advise you to have separate officers for that reason. Um, one, it's less workload for any one person, but also, kinda each get an identity. So, that's gonna be up to you, once we figure, um, out how this is all gonna work, but that option's available. You could even have two of you be a chair and vice chair, and two totally different people be the chair and vice chairs for four, you could actually be officers of the nine-member board, um, that'd be a possibility if you wanted to do it that way. So, we tried to achieve the maximum flexibility here. Um, we did change this language a little bit to say it's a one-year term or until a successor's been selected, so until, you know, someone's appointed to replace you, you continue. Um, and that mirrors what we've been doing on other boards as well. And finally, on D, um, I think most of this was in previously. Uh, we do have language to allow, like I said, either a recess of the Planning Commission or an adjourned sendai, which is when you adjourn to a point unknown. So that would actually be adjourning the Planning Commission meeting, having a board hearing, and then not reconvening. It doesn't mean the Planning Commission meetings actually ended, um, it would just be picked up at your next time that a meeting is scheduled. So, there's, it basically allows multiple options. Josh will clearly delineate on the agenda for a given meeting what you need to do, based on what the need is for that. So, you won't have to worry about weird Latin language, that'll be spelled out on the thing, just like we do with the ex parte and all that. Um, and we discussed that at length, but that's, when you get city attorneys involved, this is, tends to be the kinda language you end up with, so. Um, that's really all it means, it means either you can have a Planning Commission meeting, break into the Board of Zoning Appeals and come back, or a Planning Commission meeting, break to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and nothing. Or, alternatively, if you continue on, the board can meet on its own independently, and not even have the Planning Commission, so Mike and Brian wouldn't have to come. So there's three different options, it should cover the whole range of what we need. And then it just spells out, you have to keep minutes and track everything, and, you know, we now have the ability to record these meetings pretty easily, televise and put them on YouTube, so I don't think there's any question that we do a good job of keeping the records. And the rest of the language, I believe, was previously existed in this section, or should have, and it's all just mirroring state statute on how they document their business, in case, like I said, there is a legal challenge. Any questions about the Board of Zoning Appeals aspect?
Sounds like what we talked about the other night.
Yeah, I, I don't think this is really, I don't feel like we changed anything from the intent of your motion, but there were quite a few details that were altered in the process
Clarifying.
bringing over the code, and I know that Commissioner Tweedy just wanted to be sure that you had one more chance to view it, laid out, no, 'cause we were making a lot of changes, and I think we probably went through three rounds of revisions um, before we even had attorney approval, so. That helps us as staff to make sure we ain't make any mistakes, and we were still catching stuff there at the last minute, so. I did want to address real quickly, just so you know, there are two other sections in municipal code that have to be amended at the same time, but it's not anything you would have a public hearing on, it's just the city commission's purview. One is, like I said, the division six that established the Planning Commission, and originally, I had proposed to just delete everything out of it and adopt by reference these bylaws, um, but the city attorney emailed us today and said, you know what, we're just gonna delete this section in its entirety. So, literally, the only trace of the Planning Commission going forward will be in the zoning regulations. Um, so that will be the major change. And then in the zoning regulations, part, uh, part three of code is where we've adopted that by reference, the current adopted versions are zoning regulations amended, uh, January two thousand and sixteen, so that's when we did the sign regulations, and the subdivision regulations were amended February two thousand and sixteen, when we did the self-storage units. Um, those will be, of course, well, subdivision we won't touch, but we will update the zoning regulations to the date of whatever this is adopted. And then we've suggested to the city attorney, and we're still going back and forth on this, for some reason, there used to be a Title seventeen for subdivisions and a Title eighteen for zoning, and they had all the code there. Uh, two years ago, when we, or three years, I guess now, when we moved to these new regulations, we did the whole process with Jim Cowp, all of that language was struck out, and these companion documents were created. Well, at that time, they adopted both the zoning and subdivision regulations by reference under Art, um, Title seventeen, so we have zoning under subdivisions and not under zoning. That didn't make much sense to either me or Josh, we're not quite sure how that occurred, so we've proposed to move subdivisions back to where it goes. Um, so we're still wrangling refer on that, but that's a very minor technical point, either way, it will be adopted by reference.
Yeah.
I probably just confused the heck out of you, didn't I?
Well, just, I'm sorry, I probably, you probably said it, and I probably just wasn't, like, tracking real tight. Did you say that that was something that Mr. Cowp had done, that you felt like
I don't, I don't.
didn't make sense?
I don't know if he did it, or if Tamara did it, or if it was just a staff oversight, it just, the way we have, we still have a Title eighteen zoning, 'cause it has to exist to show all the previous code that existed at that time. It just has no subpoints, so we were just gonna move the one subpoint down a section.
Okay, well, may have been oversight, 'cause I know, I, he, he worked the dickens out of trying to eliminate.
Oh, yeah, there was a lot of language to clean up, agreed.
Okay.
And, and this is my first time even looking at all this in depth, and I'm kinda the one who said, oh, well, that doesn't really make any sense. And again, this is like the second or third round of revisions, it may have even been after your last meeting that we, uh, caught that, so. These are all very minor points.
Yeah, I just, I know, he, he tried his best to eliminate all those little empty pockets.
Yeah, we're still catching things, 'cause you're talking thirty, forty years of zoning code that we're trying to clean up, and and I'm sure will always be
Thank you.
amending as we go, but I'm hopeful this is the last really sweeping change of this nature, and we had some confusion at the city commission level too about this, mostly 'cause we didn't have a, a drafted ordinance ready for them, we just had the changes. So, I appreciate them pausing, and we never intended for it to be passed at the last meeting anyway. But it's very confusing when you're talking about this document and these sections of code and move, I mean, I don't think we'll ever probably do anything quite this ambitious, hopefully. Um, so I appreciate you guys' patience with this process. Do you have any other questions regarding the Article twenty five changes or anything else about this?
I do not, I think it was pretty well summed up last meeting and tonight, but.
If you guys have any.
It was pretty well straightforward.
I'm going to recommend the approval of the amendments to the zoning regulations, Article twenty five, including the, combining the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, and, and any more discussion this time? I will have a roll call vote on this, uh, to, a motion to approve the amendments to the zoning regulations, as Commissioner Munson stated.
Albert Brown?
Approve.
Gordon Fry?
Yes.
Charles Jennings?
Yes.
Mike Munson?
Yes.
Andrew Patton?
Yes.
Scott Rogers?
Yes.
Brian Wells?
Yes.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you, Andrew.
I just.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just have one other update for you, um, under other items, I guess. Uh, just so you're aware, we had an issue potentially come up today. Uh, as you recall, in January, we revised the sign regulations extensively, um, to match, there was some jurisprudence that had come out, and I think there was a, at least one bill out of Topeka that we needed to observe. And, uh, that was done, that went into effect. Well, Josh and I have been working to enforce the new laws as they relate to political signage, 'cause it's that time of year. And so just giving you an update on the process, in June, when Josh was on vacation, I began being bombarded by inquiries about sign placement and the regulations. Um, we had signs out of compliance, mainly the huge signs within commercial districts, which we had specifically decided to eliminate. So, we got that corrected, and at the time, we notified all the candidates, or I did notify them, that, um, they needed to try to voluntarily comply with these regulations, or eventually, there might come a point where we'd have to act. Um, most of them complied, most of the, the signs that were in places they shouldn't be were taken care of, most of the candidates were working with us, but you know how it is, you always get a few, so. Josh came back, I kinda handed back off to him. He drafted a letter and sent that to all the candidates, again, reminding them of the regulations, and then giving them a deadline of last Friday to have their signs in compliance or that they could potentially be removed. Um, we have not done that yet, um, and he, of course, was not here today, but we've had some citizens raise concerns that that doesn't meet what the law was intended to do. So, today, Nick Hernandez, the city manager, called the League of Kansas Municipalities, General Counsel, and we had some discussions with them. And as with so many other things, we didn't really get a firm answer, but it was their opinion that the intent of the law that had been passed was that the city should not regulate placement of signs in any way, shape, or form, even if they are in the public right-of-way. So for instance, between the curb and the sidewalk, which has been, that's been the guideline we've been giving to candidates, pull the signs back behind the sidewalk. This is not a unanimous opinion of the cities in Kansas, several cities are regulating it the way we were proposing to do, and getting them out of the right-of-way. Uh, the law says something about unpaved right-of-way on private property. Um, we don't believe that applies in the city limits, it's kinda like when rural roads are on somebody's land out in the county and they didn't vacate the easement. Um, so we, we're pretty sure we would be within our rights, but basically, if that was the intent, we're hesitant to go forward. So we're not pulling any signs at this point until I get some clarity. I know Josh asked the city attorney to look into this Friday, and we haven't heard an answer back from her. So the reason I bring this up, long-winded story short, Commissioner Tweedy had asked about this issue about a month ago, didn't we pass regulations to take care of this? So I don't know if there was maybe some confusion at the time that the sign regulations were brought up, um, or what the intentness of it was, and it may be an issue that we have to revisit. I don't know if that's gonna be the case, maybe it's just an enforcement thing on staff's side. So I did want you to be aware of it, Nick asked me to mention it. Um, at this point, we can regulate the size of the sign, clearly, 'cause that's part of our zoning. We are allowed to regulate their, we're allowed to put a setback on them for visibility concerns, is basically what it is. So like, if they're clustered at a corner and you're having trouble seeing her in the corner, especially if it's a big sign, um, that's clearly allowed, but, you know, it's, it's questionable whether the little tiny yard signs along a curb on a straight-line road are actually visibility obstructions, and so, does that fall under that, or does it fall under placement? And we, of course, cannot regulate the number of signs in somebody's yard, so we're looking for a little more clarity on this subject, but, you know, I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that. It, it seemed to be the impression of most people I've talked to that we were gonna continue to not allow the signs in the right-of-way, and now it's coming into question if we even have the legal right to do that, despite the new sign regulations we passed. So, not asking for any action, but if you have any thoughts, feel free to let staff know, 'cause we're still kinda trying to figure this thing out. And Josh is really the person to talk to, not me.
See, well, one of the concerns I remember in that discussion was the fact that, uh, uh, you know, they'd gotten into that thing in Arizona about what the content of the sign was. And, and as a result of, of, whatever you allow as it relates to political signs, other people can use, can place, if we allow right-of-way signs, you can open the door for other people to place things. I think there was a deal about religious signs and messages conveyed in that respect, and then there was this whole thing that says you can't discriminate based on what the, I can't remember the detail of
Yeah.
about being able to redesign and what it says, so it was kinda like, treat them all the same way, and if you don't want if you don't want controversial stuff in your right-of-way, then you probably don't want anything there, if you let anything.
And that's what I think we were trying to do, and I should clarify, we were not trying to pick on candidates, we discussed at length the need to regulate, uh, we've got a variety of contractors in town who are placing their signs in the right-ways, right next to the curbs.
Absolutely.
Um, the realtors are pretty bad about this in general. Um, so we, it was not gonna be singling out the candidates, and I believe he may have also sent letters to all the contractors and the realtors as well, if not, Teresa was supposed to do that, so. That's correct, but at the same time, we do have some provisions in the regulations that talk about during a political cycle.
During, during that season, right.
And I don't know if we're walking the line on that or not either, so it, it probably is something It probably is something that unfortunately is gonna come back before you. But we did clean up the one most pressing issue, which is they took out all the language respecting the content of the sign. We are only regulating their size and potentially their placement within the public right-of-way. And it's just, it's almost a case-by-case thing, because in a lot of these properties, you know, the property line doesn't go to the curb. So when it says on private property, it's not private property, it's vacated right-of-way and easement for the street that just continues on, where we have the easement for utility lines, and it varies depending on the property. So you can make the argument that we could still regulate it, but then we also require them to mow it. So it's like, where is the... It's just one of those funky issues, so. I think at this point, and we were only gonna deal with this, one, on a complaint-driven basis, which we have received complaints, and, two, in the most prominent areas, we were not gonna go up and down every street pulling signs if they're right next to the curb.
See, that's why we miss Randy Walp, that's why we miss Randy Walp.
Yeah.
He was a sign pull.
Right, and I don't want to be walking and pulling signs, Josh didn't want to be walking and pulling signs. We want the candidates to put the signs in the right place. And like I said, most of them have been very understanding, they've been very cooperative. And one reason I'm hesitant to just abandon what we were doing is we've got some candidates who were not complying, and are going to be rewarded, in a sense, for not doing a thing. Now this has come up, and the other ones have always pulled the signs back, because they did what they thought was the right thing. So they're not being treated fairly now, and that kind of bothers me a little bit, that... We'll come to some kind of consensus and figure it out for this primary cycle, at least, but I think maybe before the general election, if there is a need to go back and revise the regulations. And sadly, it would probably be to water them down further, so that we don't get in any legal trouble, then Josh would be bringing that back, if that's the case.
And in November, you're gonna get Westboro Baptist here, that's gonna go in the right-of-way and place some recruitment signs.
Yeah, I mean, we're seeing more and more of those. There's outfits I've never even heard of that are coming into town and putting their signs all over the place.
That's the issue.
You know, you could start to have some really overgrown situations, but it isn't much of a difference.
Second.
Motion, thanks, Andrew. Motion adjourned and seconded, all of those in favor?
I need a favor, I need a favor. I, I need a favor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson, can you do me a quick, real quick? Hurry, hurry, come here, come here. Before you guys leave, before you guys leave, before you guys leave, before you guys leave. Do this on the pan, come on, hurry, hurry, get up here, get up here, get up here. Wake up. Snap us real quick. Snap us real quick. Snap us real quick. Get the, yeah, get the, get the wide shot.
She was asleep.
Yeah, she'll be fine, she'll be... That's what happens when you stay up...
What does he do with those girls today, grandpa?
That's what happens when you stay up till three, come on. Hurry up. Hurry up. Anybody got any outstanding warrants and want to be out of the picture? Move now, get the wide shot, though, get the wide shot, so you've got everybody.
That's a different matter.
Okay, yeah, there you go. You good?
Thank you.
Hey, have a good week.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew, thanks, guys.